Yeah, alright, I hear you.
Hey, Tim, these sheets were given to me by Colin for you.
That's helpful. I've got them up on my screen, but it's not convenient.
Yeah, seeing them in your hands is...
This is his spreadsheet. There was, uh, four attachments, though. Is there something I'm missing?
This is the three that he gave us last Monday.
Is the fourth one possibly, um, what was that longer document?
Oh, wait, it was the Aflac thing you made.
That's right. Is that, uh, out of the question? Um...
That's not what we're here to talk about tonight.
Okay. Okay, Wade, how you doing?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm hanging in there. Did you just improve, Wade?
Did he or me?
Did you just improve?
Uh, I'm still, still working away, so you gotta love it.
You sounded slightly better than when I asked the question.
Okay, yes, I'm wonderful, is that better?
Alright, we'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Uh, first up, do we have any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll proceed to approval of the meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes for October thirteenth.
Yes, and as I mentioned, their titles are swapped. The regular is under special, the special is under regular. If we're approving just the regular meeting minutes, um, under citizens' concerns, the change I have is it says Sue Hayes consulted with the BLCT. I did not. I took ethics training. And that was where I got my information about not recusing myself.
Okay, so ethics training, not consultation. Alright. Any others? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Uh, I'll move to approve.
And I will second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of, I'm assuming this is approving the meeting minutes as amended tonight?
Yes.
Approving the meeting minutes as amended tonight, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Well, not opposing, but I think I should have stayed since I wasn't present.
Okay, so three, zero, one, abstention. Okay, next item on the agenda is the insurance discussion slash action item. So, Tim, were you, I can't remember, were you on the phone for Monday's meeting?
No.
Okay. Um, were you able to watch the livestream after the fact at all? Okay. So essentially, what we have in front of us, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong on anything, so... There are only two real players in the small group insurance game in Vermont, which is the, you know, group insurance plans for small businesses of under fifty employees.
Mm-hmm.
That's MVP and Blue Cross Blue Shield, okay? We currently have the Blue Cross Blue Shield Platinum Plan.
Good.
For all our employees. That's your top level five hundred dollar stack deductible, so stacked meaning each person gets five hundred. You can, you know, total up your one thousand dollar total deductible and use that all in one person. It has to be five hundred per person.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, from what it looks like on paper, MVP and the Blue Cross Blue Shield plans for both the platinum and the gold levels are identical. Same coverage, same deductible, same out-of-pocket maximums, the whole nine yards. Uh, what Colin drew up for us was this Excel sheet, and he has the 2026 rate, which if we s- for all these plans, if we stay with the Blue Cross Platinum Plan, um, it's gonna increase by five point three nine percent from last year. Um, and then he also includes some of the other options. If we switch down to the Blue Cross Gold, the MVP Platinum, or the MVP Gold. So the difference primarily between the gold and the platinum, in terms of coverage, is that your deductible for the gold is much larger. It's aggregate, so as opposed to each person, policyholder slash dependent, having their own deductible, that gets used only for them. It's a co- it's a combined.
So it's aggregate versus stacked?
Yes.
The gold plans, there are no benefits until a sixty-four hundred dollar deductible, period. There's no benefits until they've reached the sixty-four hundred dollars.
As opposed to...
As opposed to a sixteen hundred dollar per person for medical, sixteen hundred dollar per person for prescription under the platinum plans.
Yes, or in the platinum, you have the, you know, the copays that are, you know... You know, you get three, three, say you go on primary care, you get three free visits, then it's a fifteen dollar copay.
Mm-hmm.
And you're paying full freight off your deductible for all of those. So that's the, that's the main change. And then you've got, you know, emergency room care, like, they've got little, you know, discounts, like a hundred, uh, a hundred dollar copay off after your deductible for emergency room, ten percent after your deductible for outpatient, inpatient. Uh, pretty boilerplate stuff. The main takeaway is that we have essentially a choice between a platinum and a gold option. Now, Sue, we were talking last week about how we currently give them four thousand dollars to use towards deductibles, um, essentially, you know, prescription, whatever that is, and that's in the form of an HSA or an HRA?
HRA. And I want to, um, point out that Colin was mistaken. The platinum plans do not allow an HSA. Neither of the MVP or Blue Cross Blue Shields allow an HSA.
That's what I was seeing online, too. You can't do HSA, but you can do, you can't do HRA either, can you?
Yes.
You can do HRA.
Yes, you can do HRA. You've just, HSA is, um, a different animal altogether.
Yeah.
It's not allowable under the platinum plans.
Yeah, so, you know, you're familiar with the difference between an HRA and an HSA?
Uh, my wife can walk me through it right now, I'm not terribly...
Okay. Well, allow me, allow me to be your wife, so they're essentially both, um... Uh, they're, they're essentially both accounts that, you know, you, you have this money that's put into it and the policyholder can use it.
Hold me back up. I understand that it's a, it's a, uh, a health spending account. I just don't know that, uh, the functional difference between the HSA and the HRA.
So the HSA the employee can contribute to.
Up to a certain amount per year.
Up to a certain amount per year. The employer also contributes. They get to keep their HSA.
It rolls over year to year regardless of plan that you're in.
And also, you get to essentially keep it if you leave.
Yes.
Whereas an HRA doesn't have that. An HRA, the employee can't contribute. It's whatever the employer puts in.
Mm-hmm.
Paid by the town. If, for whatever reason, they choose to move on from employment with the town, they, my understanding is they lose that.
It's gone. You lose it.
Uh, sorry, uh, the one you were just describing was the HRA or the...
HRA was the second one.
Yeah.
Yeah. And now, one thing we discussed, because we have this four thousand that we contribute now to cover all this, if we were to go down to a goal plan under either an HRA or an HSA, we discussed, since the deductible, um, for the, essentially, the single spouse.
Is always sixty-four hundred.
Is always sixty-four hundred.
Always, no matter what. No matter whether they have health issues or not, it's always sixty-four hundred.
Yeah, so we, one thing we were discussing last week was increasing that four thousand amount to sixty, to cover the full sixty-four hundred. Essentially, twenty-four hundred dollar increase on that line item. Um, so these numbers that you see down here, uh, where he has the variances, um, then comparison of the current plan to any potential plan we might change to. For the two goal plans, the second column, group of columns, and the fourth group of columns, you have to deduct twenty-four hundred from those net savings amounts that he has in the bottom there, because that would account for our perspective.
You also have to deduct the forty dollar per person, which when we have three people, hopefully have three people.
Yes.
It will be a hundred twenty dollars a month for the broker fee that we currently don't pay broker fees.
But that broker fee was based on you guys taking, Colin taking, all the additional stuff, which we haven't discussed yet.
Yes.
And I believe that it's not sixty-four hundred, it's thirty-two hundred. It was sixty-four hundred per family.
Yes.
Thirty-two hundred per individual. So when you say it's sixty-four hundred, that's, you need to make it clear that it's sixty-four hundred per family, not per individual.
That is, that is correct.
But in the goal plan, Kathy, it's stacked, which means you have to reach the entire sixty-four hundred.
Aggregate.
Aggregate. You have to reach the entire sixty-four hundred until you can get any benefits at all.
But e- either way, though, you're...
It's not thirty-two hundred per person. It's thirty-two hundred plus thirty-two hundred, sixty-four hundred.
Yes, although, under, basically, essentially, all the employees we have and the one who we have the offer to, they would be looking at minimum single and spouse. I don't think, I don't believe any of them are gonna be looking at a single individual insurance plan. They'd be looking at single and spouse, so it's sixty-four across the board.
Yes.
More of you?
But that's just for the medical.
For...
Yes.
Also, you guys will have one husband.
Individual plus spouse.
Well, hang on, hang on, one at a time here, one at a time here.
That doesn't include any of the deductible fees either.
As far, can you...
As far as that four thousand dollars that we have for the, for the deductibles and the prescriptions and all that stuff.
The HRA.
That's sixty-four hundred for the medical to cover that. That doesn't include any of the, um, any of the, uh, deductibles or the, because remember, he said you'd have to put in extra money to match that.
Well, the extra money he's referring to, would, would that wasn't the twenty-four hundred on top of the fourth?
That was the twenty-four hundred on top. Would cover all the extras.
And my question is, the twenty-four hundred, if you did the colonial plan...
We're not talking about the colonial plan, Kathy.
Okay, but the colonial plan, you wouldn't have to put in the twenty-four hundred dollars, because the colonial plan would pick up the difference of the twenty-four hundred, as Colin explained, that they could use the ten thousand dollars in medical to do whatever they want. And if you figured that out, at six dollars and twenty-one cents a month, it would be three hundred and twenty-two dollars a year versus twenty-four hundred dollars per individual. And Colin was gonna get you more information before you even come to making a decision. And why is the brush? Because it was supposed to be on...
Because the person that we offered a job to will not accept until we resolve the health insurance issue.
Excuse me?
That's right.
Okay. Number one, you guys represent...
Whoa, 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 we're gonna, anyone who wants to speak at a meeting must be recognized by the chair, Marcel.
You guys were elected by the taxpayers. Your responsibility is to take care of the taxpayers. I'm not speaking as an employee in Watford. I'm speaking as a taxpayer in Watford. It's your job to represent the taxpayers, not the employees.
Our responsibility is to ensure that the affairs of the town run smoothly and in order. That is in state statute.
Yeah, I understand that, but...
Are you also aware, too, that there was MVPs talking about increasing dramatically? Did you, did you see that? It got sent to you, I believe.
MVP has posted their rates, collating to us. Those are the rates they're being used.
Well, it just came out in the, on the news the other day, that MVP's talking about an increase of nine hundred and something dollars this year, and then they're talking about going up a thousand.
I believe that might, that refers to single, like, single-person individuals. I don't believe that refers to small group. I, I did, I did see that article, and I believe it referred to individuals, not small group. So small group is safe from that.
What I found, Jim, was that small group, they requested to go up, um, seven and a half percent, but there's a watchdog organization in, um, Vermont that allowed them to only have a two and a half percent increase. Where Colin has the nineteen or the nine percent, um, reduction in price, I don't know where that's from, but the average increase to MVP was two and a half.
So those percentages are just the change in what we'd be paying with that versus the, what we're currently paying.
I thought it was the change in the, in the premium.
No, that's, that's the percent that we're saving on that line item.
I get it.
On that line item. So essentially, if we, you know, consider the HRA, increasing that to sixty-four hundred, the math I came to, you don't deduct from the, uh, MVP Platinum. That stays at sixty, or sixty-nine ninety-three thirty-six, but you have to take away twenty-four hundred from each of those other items. So you get, uh, Blue Cross Gold saves you six thousand one hundred and sixteen fifty-two after that, uh, deduction, and then MVP Gold saves you twelve thousand eight hundred and fifteen after that deduction. That's over the span of the year.
Can I get, one day, you get a chance?
Yeah.
That's something.
Yes.
Yeah, try it.
Good. Um, so I just wanted to say one thing. So, uh, as I've kind of been doing my research the last couple days, uh, what I found, basically, is that we're one of the very few towns that offers such a very generous plan. Um, towns that pay a hundred percent generally are asking that the employee will do the HSA or HRA. They never do both. Um, right now that I can speak of is the town of Stepford, uh, which their town crew, their lead foreman gets, I believe he's twenty-eight dollars an hour, so he's a little bit less. And he, and then, uh, town pays ninety percent of his healthcare, and he has to pay ten percent. Um, I know this is probably unfavorable, but this is unheard of, that we're paying a hundred percent if we're trying to level the budget, and then level the budget with a cost increase. I don't think it's too much to ask our employees to pay five point five percent if they want to keep with the same plan. So, that's, that's my point, and that's all I get.
Well, now, in terms of leveling the budget, though, Wade, these, you know, savings that I've listed off, that would be savings off of this year's line item, not next year's potential. That doesn't, like, next year's would be, if we accept the Blue Cross Platinum, that would go up five point four percent. These are, you know, savings off of this year's line item, so...
Right. Did you see that, Will? I'm just saying, for the future, so say next year, when we do the budget, if we ask our employees to pay the five point five percent, if I'm understanding the insurance rate, if, if it's gonna increase five point five, which my, my, my work is, where I pay twenty percent of my health insurance, if that goes up five point five, then the employee picks up the five point five percent, we pick up the rest, that's still extremely generous.
Is there a factor here that we may be slightly low in the pay rate of, uh, certain employees in the town that we're trying to compensate for?
Is that what I?
Go ahead, Wade.
I'm sorry, I didn't, it's hard, I can't face my hand. Uh, when I've gone through the league of cities and towns, those that report, we are not that much lower. Tim, there, I mean, some towns are higher, some are right around where we are. Uh, Stepford I have some knowledge of. And then I used to work for the town of Norwich. Same thing, we're right on par, except benefits package, we, we're definitely, we do well.
So when you say we're not that much lower, we're not that much lower than average, or we're above average, not much lower than, like, the other, uh, top, you know, spending towns, say, top-paying towns?
Sure, salary-wise, from what I could tell, and anybody can see that, some, I believe, actually, probably Deb even has a copy, um, we're, our salary, we're pretty across the board with other small towns our size.
Last year, when I looked, we were a little lower than Peachum, Barnet, Linenville, the surrounding towns, we seemed to be a dollar or more lower.
That jogs with my understanding.
Yeah, and again, our competitive, we talk about, you know, how competitive our labor pool is here. Um, we're really competing with the other towns local to us. Stepford's close by, but it's still pretty far away. You're not gonna get someone answering a call to go Pla de Ros at three, I'm from down there, so if we were to, you know, say for the sake of argument, we were to try and get someone from down there, um, their biggest barrier would be the travel. I, I don't know if that's, you know, necessarily what we should be considering for our competition pool here in terms of our rates, because unless you get someone who really wants to move up here, we're not gonna, you know, be competing with them anyway.
That's not necessarily what I'm saying, Will. What I'm saying is, basically, I'm very familiar with union negotiations, and during union negotiations, we pull the state of Vermont, right? And then what you have to do is pull towns your size, and when doing that and looking at this, and, and yes, Sue, I did see that, like, Danville and some of those other towns were about a dollar, but when you look at how much healthcare we're paying, what, thirty thousand dollars, I think, a year for one employee, wasn't it? I don't have the charts in front of me, but that's a tremendous amount of money to, I mean, it, I just, yeah, I think it's a lot.
Okay.
I just think it's unheard of to pay a hundred percent insurance. If, most employees, employers don't. And for, second thing, is for an employee to have input as to what kind of insurance, and they don't want to come to work for us until they find out what kind of insurance. Most corporates, most employees don't have, or any business, the employee does not have any input into what the people pay.
Their input is whether or not they work for us.
And that's the way it is. And then the door is right there. I'm sorry, but that is not it. And then we need to have a meeting where all board members are present, that we need to have Colin here to do his presentation. Tim didn't hear the presentation. He hasn't heard it. He didn't listen to the livestream. He didn't listen to it. Mr. Gray is out of town. He's unable to attend. He can't even attend by phone. And I think, because this employee doesn't want to come to work for the town, I, as a taxpayer, am looking out for the people of the town, and you people were elected by the town to do what is best for the town. And the employees have zero input into what kind of insurance we have, and you need to have Mr. Pucci come back and do his presentation on the colonial life and the Aflac, so Mr. Gero can hear it and see what it is gonna cover, versus ask the town, put another twenty-four hundred dollars into each employee. They get dental insurance. They get all their disability. I don't know of many employees, employers that pay for dental insurance. We, I own Medicare. Most people that are on Medicare are on limited income. We all have to pay a premium to the federal government every single month. So for us to pay a hundred percent and not ask an employee to pay any money is ludicrous. Even Wade told you, he has to pay a percentage, and he works for the state. So for you to ask us to pay a hundred percent, plus all their other benefits and their rates, is ridiculous. And I think it needs to be voted on at a different meeting. It was to be discussed, and if the employee can't, has to come to work now, then I guess you gotta go someplace else. You were gonna have a working meeting on Monday, then you need to discuss it then. It's ridiculous.
Okay, Suki?
Um, I basically, Ruth, Kathy, I think, and Marcel, anyway, it's not, it's basically unheard of that we pay a hundred percent of anybody's health insurance. I've worked for private industry. I've worked in healthcare myself, and never received one hundred percent benefits for anything. At most, it was eighty percent, and I paid the twenty percent. And then I paid all the deductibles and everything else. So I think it's ridiculous. Plus, I've never been offered a plan through a workplace that was even close to a gold. It was also silver was what you got. If you wanted a gold, you could pay the extra to, you know, get, can bump up to that premium. But you would pay the extra to that, and you would pay the twenty percent. So, and I've written, of course, I sent you all a letter earlier today, so you see, see that. And so that's, you know, I think we should be looking at, especially into the future. Maybe it's too late to do it now, but we should definitely consider that in the future. And I think a lot of towns are going to have to go through the same, you know, painful process of doing this.
You're correct in that a lot of towns are having to deal with this. I know Moretown, uh, last year had a reckoning with this, as did, oh, God, was it Westford or Westfield? I can't remember which one I was reading about, but, um, and, and Warren as well. Um, all, all took different approaches. Some reduced, some kept the same. Um, the big thing to keep in mind of, unlike a corporate job, this is very much a, involving physical labor. These guys are putting their body on the line, and they're very susceptible to workplace injuries, some of which can be...
Well, yes, my husband used to work in a position like that, like a tower climber.
I went, so...
One of the most dangerous positions that there is, you know, climbing, putting foot towers and putting up some equipment and that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
And so, you know, and didn't get any extra jobs.
Well, and...
Just, just saying. But anyways, so, so I think, you know, you're not, you're just making an assumption there without actually knowing that, you know, in a lot of physical labor positions where you are maybe prone to injuries, I, you know, there aren't, you know, hundred percent coverages. The towns just can't do it. And you have to look at, what's our population here? How many of us are on fixed incomes? And we have to, you know, we're having our Medicare premiums go up, we're having our deductions go up, the coinsurings go up, the copays go up, and deduct, and everything else, and add that to the inflation. So, it's, it's gonna be a stretch for many people. I, you know, I don't know how many people will have to leave this town if we continue to have these out-of-control budgets.
Well, again...
And so I could just, just consider that and be thinking and coddling up that, because it's not gonna get any easier. And, you know, we're looking at inflation, which is, if you look at food inflation, for real food, it's, it's enormous.
Oh, I, I agree. I've been, I've been seeing it myself. My, I'm looking at, you know,
Yeah.
new, new, new enrollment in health insurance, and yeah, my rates are gonna go up, too. I pay a hundred percent. My employer does not provide that. I, I totally sympathize with, you know, the feeling of, oh, boy, having to foot the bill for a hundred percent of a plan. But the other thing, we have to, we have to consider two things here. One, we can still offer essentially the same benefits, even if we go with the MVP Platinum and save the town money from what the line item was last year. That is a savings.
That is what, what Colin did report, and that was, that's a good thing.
I guess. Do you have one concern about MVP? And...
If, if I may, real quickly, though, the other thing is, if this is so preposterous and, you know, out there of a notion that a town would pay for a hundred percent of its insurance, why was the town doing it for so many years? Was it really that, you know, strange that we did it? Was it that divisive at the time that we did it? You know? We're, we're essentially continuing what the town was doing.
I can't speak to that, because I haven't been through that long.
Mm-hmm. So, Sue, I'm sorry, Sue, you were...
Wade, you were gonna tell us some anecdotal stuff about MVP, and then I did some research, and I'd like to share that with everyone, but I wanted to give you an opportunity to speak.
Sure, I didn't, I, I got some hearsay, Sue. I, I actually reached out to MVP and kind of got the cold shoulder. Um, but what I do know, talking personally to, uh, someone who does counseling, is and a lot of people use counselors these days, and a lot of counseling sessions are not covered by them, where, and a lot of them do not take MVP insurance, uh, where, and that, that's not talking medical, of course, that's, you know, therapy sessions. Um, so that's one thing that I, that I wanted to consider. I don't, I mean, well-being, employee well-being is very important to me in my role, and I think it should be to us as the, the town, too. So I, I just, I didn't get the hard facts I was looking for, Sue, so I don't know if you did.
Um, I got the hard facts on availability, because you had mentioned that you had heard. Um, when I asked Colin last week if MVP, I had only heard of Blue Cross Blue Shield in Vermont, and so MVP was a, was an unknown to me. But I went to doctor.com, and using all cities in Vermont, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Vermont has three, three thousand five hundred and thirty-eight providers. MVP Healthcare has five hundred and sixty-three providers. So you've got one-seventh of the providers in all the cities in Vermont. I was like, well, what if they have a bigger presence in the Northeast Kingdom? So I was able to refine the search to St. Johnsberry. Blue Cross Blue Shield has two hundred and forty-nine providers. MVP Healthcare has fifteen. Uh, I refined it to Concord, Vermont, which is where one of our employees lives. Blue Cross... Blue Cross Blue Shield has one hundred and fourteen providers and MVP Health has six. Now, without knowing the providers of the employees, I have no idea if that impacts them or not. But I thought it was worth a look to see if they truly were statewide like Colin told us they were. And the, it comes down to they have a lot less providers.
What is, what is the definition of a provider? Just off the top of my head, I'm thinking of.
Doctor, so there's general practitioners, there's orthopedists, there's surgeons, there's all the types of doctors. It's all doctors.
Oh, like in the demographic, whatever their, you know, demographic area of, of study is for Concord, Vermont. Are those providers that are doing their own in-house stuff in Concord or are those ones just located in Concord that do house calls?
They're, they were, so when I looked at the website, they're individual doctors that may be involved in a group or a clinic or whatever. But they were listed by individual. So there are two hundred and forty nine individual doctors, which I think even included dentists and eye doctors. I think it was just, if you're an MD, boom. But St. Johnsberry, the two forty nine to fifteen and the Concord one fourteen to six sort of showed the local flavor. But statewide, there are thirty five hundred Blue Cross Blue Shield providers with only five hundred and sixty three MVP.
Sue, can I dig into your number? Concord, we're talking Concord, Vermont?
Yeah.
Hundred and fourteen medical doctors in Concord, Vermont.
That's what was listed.
Something doesn't seem right.
Well, it's on doctors.com. You can look it up and maybe.
That makes no sense.
Yeah, I'm not.
There's a Concord clinic. I don't know.
Concord, New Hampshire.
Living in Concord. No, it was Concord, Vermont. I would definitely search St. Johnsberry, Vermont and Concord, Vermont.
Might have something to do with the.
It might have something to do with St. Johnsberry Hospital being in a network.
Yeah, but even still, only fifteen providers being listed for MVP seems low if MVP.
Yeah, so I had never heard of them and Colin assured us that yes, they do provide, they do have providers statewide, but he didn't share with us the numbers of people.
The providers, does that mean, are they?
Doctors, doctors, doctors.
DOs, MDs or ARNP's or PA's or whatever. The provider is such a fuzzy.
Well, this was under doctors.com.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But in any case, you can see the difference. That's all, that's, it was just an example of whether or not MVP was as prevalent as Blue Cross Blue Shield. And the answer is no, they are not.
Okay, we'll do Marcel and then Cathy. Marcel?
Just, um, heads up the board. As of close of our tax time in October, I have never seen a time where I've got a link with what I have right now. What I'm hearing from people is they're very pissed off at the town. Finances, not able to pay. This is, I'm going to be chasing people for months. So just so you know that we did not, we did not do very well in taxes this year.
Marcel, I'm just curious. You indicated people were, were pissed off in your, in your words. It's my understanding that the, the town is prepared to level fund its budget next year, correct? So the real problem has been what the state of Vermont has done for the education.
That's, that's part of it. Part of it of people in that are reappraisable. People just can't afford to pay taxes. You don't know how many people come to me and say, I can't afford to pay it this year. We've got to either level fund, we've got to do something. So if you're going to go with more health plan, then you're going to have to cut somewhere else.
Oh, so I'm sorry. Cathy and then Jim?
I believe you're going to see more people take MVP. I had MVP when we lived in New York for a short time. It was great insurance. And with Blue Cross and Blue Shield making cuts and prices going up, that you're going to see a lot more providers that will be taking MVP, especially if it has the same coverage basically as Blue Cross Blue Shield. MVP has not been a Vermont business. It is now becoming a Vermont business. So for you to use those numbers as comparison, I think is extreme, is not a correct comparison to use because Blue Cross Blue Shield was eliminating their advantage plan this year. So a lot of more people, even people on limited income, are going to have to make a choice what they do for insurance.
No, I, I, I share your, your skepticism, you know, no, no offense to those provider, provider numbers.
That's, that's what was on the website.
Jim?
I just want to remind you of the word that we, we have gone from a four man crew down to a two to three man crew. We're saving the town a lot of money compared to what we were in the past.
That is true.
But yet, then on top of that, I'm going from a family plan to a, to a, just a couple plan. That's going to save the town money. But I'm also very concerned about the fact that with this, everybody talking about saving money and how much it's costing. The highway department is the only one that has been scrutinized here constantly. There are other departments in this town besides the highway department. And if we truly, truly want to save money, I think that we should look around the whole town in order to see where we can make adjustments and cuts in order to save the town money.
No, it's definitely something to consider, right? This is one line item in a budget where we can potentially find other savings. And again, compared to what we're paying this year, we have the potential to save up to, you know, twelve thousand eight hundred dollars essentially from what we were paying last year. That in and of itself is a savings. We'll do Marcel because I saw you first and then Clement and Cathy.
Um, I'll say the town budget's been way below budget, so.
And what, can you clarify what you mean by that?
We are operating at lower than our budgeted amount for this year.
So we're, we've spent less than we were projected to at this point in the year.
And salaries and everything, so.
I am as well.
All right, Clem?
You ought to take, have nine to five jobs. Is that what you want the road crew to do with nine to five? And when you, how many people get up at two o'clock, three o'clock in the morning and go to work?
That is a, a valid point. Cathy?
I've worked for a couple of big construction companies in my working career. One was Frank Wycombe. And I worked for one with Benoff. And those people, as employees, we all have to pay a portion of our insurance. And I'm not sure, I don't remember, but some of them, I believe the stuff was not covered and if we wanted it to be covered, we had to pay for it out of our pocket. It was a while ago since I've done it. And I just, I think it's, to pay a hundred percent is ludicrous. And will you ask why it had been like this? It's been questioned three or four years. Elke Billik questioned it about four years ago when Mike Barrett was on. We tried to do it and it was too late. And when that whole ruckus went down in November or December, Colin couldn't make the presentation, it was too late. We couldn't change insurances then. There was time to talk about it then and we were all set to do it. And that's when the whole thing blew up and December was a waste. So this isn't something new and it's been proposed year after year. Last year it was proposed that we start discussing it in September. It didn't get discussed until November. It was too late again. So this isn't something new. The board has been pushed for three or four years, if not more.
But the benefit has been available for much longer than three.
Hang on, hang on, Sirs.
But the board has been pressured to look at not paying a hundred percent. And now I think it's ideal time to do it. We have the board's attention. We have time to do it before we have to sign up for new insurance. Yeah, they work long hours, but when Mr. Paul Hayes did the comparison for salaries, Mr. Hayes' salary was not that much less than some of the surrounding towns. And they don't have a hundred percent insurance and they have to pay a portion of their insurance. So I think you need to look at the big picture, not just our three employees in the town of Waterford. And a lot of people in the town of Waterford, probably fifty percent are on limited incomes. And our premiums are now going up in Medicare. And who knows what's going to happen with all the government shutdown, what kind of effect it's going to have on us people that are on limited incomes.
This, this five zero percent that you're saying are on limited incomes, you're suggesting that fifty percent of the population is, say, over the age of sixty five and retired?
I'm saying there's a good portion of us, I don't know if it's fifty percent, but it could be close to fifty percent.
As, as, as of the 2010 census, it was sixteen and a half percent were over the age of sixty five or of age where they would be.
Of what year?
Twenty ten. I was unable, I was unable to look at twenty ten census data because I saw your email this morning and I was looking to corroborate that.
Now fifteen years later, there's a lot more of us that have gone out on retirement, that have lived here that long or more. So I think it needs to be reviewed there. You're looking at a number that's fifteen years old as a valid. It's not valid.
It's, at least it's a number.
It's not valid, I can assure you.
Is, is a conjecture of fifty percent valid either though? That's the question we have to ask. Jim?
Like you say, what, Marcel can attest to this, that over fifty percent of the parcels of property in town are owned by out of stateers.
That's right. Have no say, have no say in the town.
Right, but my point is she's saying fifty percent of the people here. And that's not necessarily correct. And I also want to add that when Ron did the comparison of the wages around here, I was the lowest paid one. Out of Danville, Barnett, Peachum, Concord, I was the lowest, lowest out of all.
That's the root side of.
Go ahead, Wade, and then I'm going to rebut something that was said earlier.
Just, Jim, with all due respect, you do a great job, but you're comparing yourself to other towns that believe that have larger road crews. So your supervision is less than those other towns.
Exactly.
I'd like to rebut what Cathy said about the board being pushed by the citizens of Waterford the last three or four years. I can name five that have pushed us. We have one thousand registered voters in Waterford. And the five that are most vocal, loud, noisy, get all of the attention. And I'd just like to say that the board has only been pushed by a few individuals to make this change.
People are afraid to come to the meetings because they get shut off.
Whatever. Let's move on, please.
Okay. Oh, I'd like to actually add a couple of thoughts here. First of all, my family's been on MVP for a while. My wife's business uses MVP and has for a long time. And I think they're doing great by us and I think nobody else is complaining about MVP either. I think we're on one of the top level programs, plans, but nonetheless, it's been a really good experience for us. Secondly, I wonder if Blue Cross Blue Shield is factoring in to their proposed or their upcoming rates, the fact that they are actually financially stressed, I mean severely financially stressed. And I think they're trying to make up for that in a, in a somewhat astonishing rate increase.
I, I have heard that rumor too.
I saw it just this morning or yesterday evening and I can't, I, I think it was Bernie Sanders' output. So for what that's worth, I had a third point. Oh, Cathy, you had said, we're not in any hurry. Could you elaborate on that? Because I do want to come to the correct decision. I don't want to drag our feet either. But what is our time to get this done? I mean, I presume you're in a position to know that.
No, what I'm, it needs to be done for budget, but it was on the agenda, I believe, to be on the next meeting, which, the working meeting, which is Monday. So all of a sudden I went on this morning to look at the minutes from last week and I see there was a meeting scheduled tonight for the insurance. So I called the town hall to ask why. And I was told because this new employee won't sign any papers until he knows what kind of insurance plan we're going to have. He knows what we have for an insurance plan now. So he, this insurance isn't going to take effect until January. His probation, he has a ninety day probation. Does the insurance take effect the day he's hired?
Yes, of course, yes.
The first day of the following month after being hired.
So I believe it should wait until Monday night when there is a working meeting. That's three or four more days. Why do we have to make this decision tonight? You have Wade who is only on by phone. You have Ron who is not here, who was the chairman of the board, who can't voice any concerns, can't vote. So I think you're overstepping your boundaries by having this, this meeting held tonight, not have it even publicized anywhere. It wasn't on our Facebook page that there was a special meeting.
Oh, yes, it was. I posted it myself.
I guess I didn't see it and I always get the notifications.
I don't know what to tell you. I know, I posted it originally for Monday night. And then when the agenda didn't get warned adequately, I sent another call up message saying it was postponed to tonight.
I just don't think that a decision needs to be made tonight. You need to have Colin come back with additional information. You asked him to provide for you and go over the colonial and the Aflac one, which he didn't even discuss that night. So that you can make a firm decision whether you're going to add another twenty four hundred. Because that's what you're talking about right now, about making that decision tonight with whatever insurance plan you go with. And maybe in that time, then maybe it will get out and there'll be more citizens that will show up than the three or four of us that are here as taxpayers. I think it's wrong. And I don't think you're doing the town of Waterford justice by making this decision on such short notice.
You are venturing very far into the world of conjecture here by insinuating that we're deliberately trying to rush this proceeding to sneak it under the eyes of people. The most, the loudest voices against, you know, any increase or maintaining the same level of insurance are in this room right now. I'm not sure how you think that's going, that would change in a week's time by us rushing. That certainly would not have been a factor in our decision.
Because I reached out to a couple of people today and they were unable to come under such short notice that were against this hundred percent insurance and the increase.
Well, have them come on Monday. They weren't here last Monday.
But they didn't know what the effect was going to be.
In the back, yes.
Two things.
What's your name real soon?
Jerry Allen.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you all, everybody here. I think we're all trying to get to the same thing. And I appreciate your leadership. So I wonder a couple of things, like as for setting up insurance, I just wonder, but as far as I know, don't you have to have all your enrollment done by like November fifteenth? Isn't like anytime you switch plans, like November, mid-November is the cutoff date? So I'm just throwing that out there. Somebody can probably Google it, but once that date is done, you can't enroll again for another year. So that's one thing. I would look into that. The other thing, should a committee be formed, maybe not even the selectmen, but a committee of six, seven adults that are long-term residents here? You know, Clem knows what's going on. Can we just look at how people in our own town could maybe step forward to, do we need to get rid of the cleaning service for this whole building? Could we, could we look at a volunteer, could we even just discuss, could we find volunteers in our town? One, you know, fifty ladies who would say, this week I'll do the basic cleaning. I know this is a lot, but we are getting to difficult times. Is there someone in town who could do repairs? That would be paid at cost in a little something like, I feel like we've got to start thinking outside the box. Like is there a man in this town who could repair the vehicles at the town garage? I just think at this point, there's a lot of talent in this town. There's a lot of assets. And maybe we just need to think outside the box a little bit. Because I think we should look at what are we paying for cleaning? Could the temperature be a little lower here? You know, I don't think we can shave the duck down. We have very restricted hours and they do a beautiful job, but I think. But I think we need to try to look at the positive. And also, there's just so much wealth of talent in this town. Of, I mean, Zuki and her husband do things for this library.
We fix all the doors easily.
I think we just need to say, look, with with what's happening with, I I came in when you were discussing how many people couldn't pay taxes. Then I think we need to say, what can we do as a town? If the town meeting, we need to have it out there. This is what the committee is suggesting. If we're gonna reduce taxes, do we need to, what I I think you could probably, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, is it Jim?
Jim.
Jim, could think of ten things that an ordinary man living in this town has the skills to do. Maybe we need a volunteer at his garage to wash the vehicle, change the garbage, do whatever it would take to take the burden off a man and one helper. You know, and appreciate the fact that our roads have been impeccably cared for. Yes, they're not like maybe what they were, but how can two men do it? And I think we just need to appreciate each other and what's happening here.
So to your, to your first question about enrollment, the, yes, the traditional open enrollment period for all insurance starts November first, and it goes until November fifteenth. I, in years past, it's always been till the end of November.
So I tried to look for that, and it just talks about the opening, the open enrollment begins November first, but it does go for a certain period of time, but I don't see what that is on.
Yeah, so you're, so you're correct, and that is why we're discussing this now. It is very close to the eleventh, I mean, it's the twenty-first of October here.
Yeah.
Which is why we need to iron this out either if not tonight, then next Monday. To your second point, as far as community volunteers, I know, you know, and I believe you hinted at this in other towns, this has been an issue too. Even just service on town boards has been difficult to find, you know, filling bodies for a planning commission or a development review board, et cetera. You know, that that could be something we could look into as a select organ.
And if you're not a company that carries your own insurance, then you have to somehow get on the town's insurance.
You have to be an employee.
Yeah, so.
Do you even volunteer?
Well, it it depends on.
What you're doing.
And then there's workers that are.
Are you kidding me?
I'm not kidding.
Okay, then let's, then let's create a waiver that's legally done by someone in this town that says if you're going to let Zuki and her husband come in and do all this carpentry and nobody knows about it.
A waiver is only good as a favorite sign.
Well, then let's at least say our word is our word. We give our word that if we're working to put in risers or whatever, we we waive, you know. I don't know. I just think we need to look outside the box.
No, I I I agree. And, you know, that that is part of, you know, being a small town, that's part of why I wanna live here. Because, you know, we look out for one another. We pitch in when, you know, someone needs help or when we all need something done, you know, people pitch in to help. That's definitely something we can look into. Oftentimes, these, you know, these work better as grassroots efforts from citizens. If they form their own group that establishes, you know, has a name, they meet every so often, and they.
Like the ladies guild or, you know, a gentleman's guild that handles repairs and is doing it at cost out of, whatever. But I think we should at least propose this to the town and look if we can do it.
The answer to your question with the town drive, they do their own maintenance, are they can possibly do?
Wow.
We do most all the work, except for the big stuff. Say what they can do with the, all of this modern technology stuff.
Right, well, not everybody can do that.
Okay.
Like, you know, do their own way.
So if I may bring this back into the world of insurance, Sue, you had, oh, did Wade?
Nope, we still have them.
Okay, um, you had something, you had something you wanted to say about the gold plan?
Yes, um, I thought maybe we're gonna need to do this. Asking Colin questions about the platinum versus gold because I found it very hard to believe that they're the same exact thing, but a much lower price. So when I did my own research, I found out that the gold plans offer no medical benefits or prescriptions until sixty-four hundred dollar deductible is met. In order to be fair to the employees, we talked about possibly raising the HRA from four thousand to sixty-four hundred. But if you remember what we were told at the meeting, Chris Hayes stated that the four thousand HRA not only pays for their medical, but also their dental. So that means that they're not using the full amount. And in a platinum plan, you don't have to. It's sixteen hundred medical per person. So say one of the spouses is perfectly healthy and has very minimal medical costs. Their out-of-pocket may be as little as sixteen hundred dollars. Or let's say they have medical and prescriptions, it could be as little as thirty-two hundred dollars. But the gold plans, it's no ifs, ands, or buts, it's sixty-four hundred dollars before you see any benefit at all from the plan, which might mean that it never benefits the employees. If they're, I don't know about, but me personally, my medical expenses, vision, dental, and medical, I take no prescription drugs, I'm under two thousand dollars a year. So I would never benefit from a gold plan. And I don't like the idea of raising the HRA either, Kathy. So I thought a baby step, if MVP was readily available to our employees, it's the exact same plan. I checked off box, box, box. It gives absolutely everything that the Blue Cross Blue Shield plan does. It's the same deductibles, it's the same coverage. It just, it looks like a match compared to the paperwork that we receive. The savings there for a couple, the premium for Blue Cross Blue Shield would be twenty-eight eighteen eighty-six, where the MVP would be twenty-four thirty-two thirty-eight, a savings of three eighty-six forty-eight per month. But take away the forty dollar broker fee, because currently we don't pay broker fees, but we would moving forward. A three forty-six forty-eight per month is a four thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars and forty-six cents per employee on that plan. With any luck, we are able to hire a second person who needs a couple plan. That times two is over eight thousand dollars savings in one year for two employees. The family plan, we have one person on the family plan. The Blue Cross Blue Shield Platinum Plan is three thousand nine hundred sixty dollars and fifty cents. The MVP plan is three thousand four hundred seventeen and forty-nine for a total savings of five hundred forty-three dollars and one cent per month. Take away the forty dollar per month broker fee, you're left with a five hundred and three dollar savings. That's six thousand thirty-six dollars and twelve cents per year.
Not to interrupt, you're comparing this to twenty-twenty-six.
The twenty-twenty-six numbers.
Okay, because I'm looking at.
Because we're putting together a twenty-twenty-six budget. That's what we're talking about. So we need to work with twenty-twenty-six numbers. But we're now talking about over a fourteen thousand dollar savings with the employees. As long as their providers accept MVP, they don't see a difference. We see a large savings. It's a first step, maybe it's not the best step, but it's a step that brings savings. And considering how much the road department has been without a third person, I think getting that third person on board, we save over fourteen thousand dollars a year.
Well, and you, and you mentioned, you know.
And we don't raise the HRA. It stays at four thousand, and it's, it's not needed to be higher.
I'll get to you in a second, Tim, but, and you mentioned, you know, the gold doesn't make sense to you because you don't use it as much. Again, this circles back to utilization.
Right, right.
And I really do, I hope I'm not coming off as ageist to those gentlemen in the back, but as we, as we get, as we get older, and especially as we work jobs that are more physically taxing, right? We introduce more potential for health problems and, you know. Who, Jim, how, how, I'm assuming Sean is the youngest person on your staff. How old is he right now?
Third example.
Yeah, so we're, we're in the territory where high utilization is. Yes, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna compare like to like a mass front, but just in general, statistically speaking, right?
Right.
We're likely to see high utilization.
But I don't see how you all of a sudden just go to the gold plan. I don't see how you all of a sudden make them pay more of their premium. That would require a change in their pay because you basically just reduced their salaries when you do that. So if you, if you stick with a plan that is the exact same that they have, you don't increase the HRA, we could still save fourteen thousand dollars.
Tim, you were gonna say?
On paper, MVP looks interesting to me, but what is the hesitation here? Unfamiliarity? Do they provide what they say they provide?
I just had never heard of that.
I think it's unfamiliarity primarily.
And then when I looked up, like I said, when I looked up providers, it's substantially smaller numbers than Blue Cross Blue Shield. But Blue Cross Blue Shield has been around forever.
They have been. And, you know, I was thinking MVP is what I know, so Blue Cross Blue Shield, I don't know what they do.
Right.
Again, I've always used Blue Cross, so I know nothing of MVP. I think it's right, unfamiliarity breeding, you know, caution, caution.
But when you look at the paper, they're identical plans. They provide all of the same coverage.
In terms of dollar amounts, yes.
There's no change in dollar amount deductibles, there's no change in cost to the employee.
I mean, if that's true, it almost seems like a no-brainer.
If their providers happen to be in those smaller numbers.
Which makes sense because MVP in Vermont has a much larger customer base than Blue Cross. It's like insurance one-on-one. The more people you get buying into your plan, the lower you can charge. True, true. So Marcel.
What you have to remember is what Colin said, the difference between Blue Cross Blue Shield and the MVP. MVP, you're gonna pay upfront until you meet your deductible. Blue Cross Blue Shield, you don't pay upfront until you meet your deductible.
In the platinum plan, you do.
Yes.
But I, maybe, maybe approaching gold plan is something that the board for next year looks at, but I think it's too big of a step at this point, and I don't wanna raise the HRA either. But I think it would only be fair to the employees if you receive zero insurance benefits until you've spent sixty-four hundred dollars. I don't know what, what our employees have for medical costs, but I just know from my own that I would never get a single benefit from the gold plan. I would never meet the deductible.
So just tossing out ideas here, I would like to see Colin's presentation, but I don't need him to come back to do that. I can go online and, and see what I missed from last week. Would we be terribly pressed if we push off the actual vote till next Monday?
I think we've discussed it before.
When's the date for next Monday? When's next Monday's date?
Twenty-seventh.
So you, okay, so you have enough time.
I was just concerned about hiring our new guy.
I'd like to.
But I don't have any problem with pushing it off to Monday. But I I would think that the discussions that we've had, if we could maybe reach a conclusion about what we're going to discuss on Monday, so we don't have a rehash of this same exact conversation. Because that would have been a complete waste of our time coming here this evening. So if we can narrow down what we talk about on Monday, that would be substantially helpful and not a waste of our time this evening.
Well, my only reason for wanting to push off is simply I'd, I'd like to know a little greater detail what I would be casting a vote for. And I'd like to cast it with confidence and be able to defend it, as simple as that. I I know what I'm looking at here, and, you know, I'm led in one direction, but I wanna know what the arguments against it are as well.
Can you just put out a number of what it costs for each employee? Because I'll just throw out one thing, if nobody, you don't know about Spruce Medical that's in Newport in St. J? They're wonderful doctors. We have one doctor in St. J. You pay a hundred dollars a month, and you have unlimited amounts of doctor visits. And he's been in practice, he's fifty-five, fifty-six years old. You have unlimited amount of doctor appointments, phone calls, and it's him who calls you back at home. Now, I know that will cover your labs or your eye, but it, just throwing it out there, if that could ever be looked at as a cost saving.
So you're saying he's an independent?
Not this year.
Yep, he's a, it's Spruce Medical, there are like some independent doctors getting together that won't take insurance anymore. They just, you pay them a hundred dollars.
It's, it's like one, I can't remember the technical term for it. It's like your own private.
It's like concierge.
Concierge, thank you.
It is, and this is what people are doing because the doctors are tired of being run by insurance companies.
So, Jim, one last.
Keep in mind too, that it's not just about this decision on Monday that you're talking about. You're talking about two weeks down the road further than that. Because if he gets hired, he's gotta get two weeks' notice. So you're a pushing winner. That's all. And I would like to find out and get some clarity on this vision deal.
I already told you, I made.
You also, hey, Sean, it was uncovered and Deb was on it, and it's been.
Deb is not on it. I made the mistake. I thought it was covered. I offered it to him. It was my mistake. I stood up for it. We're covering him till the end of the year. And then after that, you're all gonna have to pick what you want.
Okay, that's what I wanted was clarity.
That's what I told you the other day.
No, you didn't tell me.
Yes, I did.
Okay, gentlemen, let's hold, let's hold. All right. Here, no further discussion up here. Wade, do you have anything?
Sorry, as we know, I'm not well.
Okay, um, do we have any motions?
What are you suggesting?
Well, as, as chair, I'm just wondering if anyone would like to make a motion of any kind. I, it seems like we're not gonna come to a decision tonight, even if we stay here for another hour, so.
Well, in my, in my case, it's just a lack of clarity on the, the issues here.
And I'm glad we could have this so that you have at least one meeting before the next one, where it's been presented to, you have time to mull it over. Because I, this has been, you know, primary front of my brain for the last seven days.
Well, and I can see that you both have done some good research into it, Wade as well. I have not yet, so this is, this is new to me.
Okay, I will, I will entertain a motion to table this until the working meeting on the point.
Is there any way to limit the discussion on Monday? Can we say that we're going to look at just the two platinum plans?
I'm fine with that. I don't know what else we need to consider here.
I just think that the gold plan is such a huge leap that we'd have to give a different employee benefit.
I, I don't, I don't know if we're gonna be able in the scope of a motion to narrow.
Because we're gonna have this, we've been, let's see, an hour.
Yeah.
And we're gonna have the same hour, it's gonna get peddled out the exact same way it unfolded this evening. We're gonna have to go through it all again unless we can.
Well, I can imagine wanting to invite Colin back, so we have somebody who has some knowledge and can do some explaining, and then you'll have a little bit of clarity.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I don't object to having Colin here. I, I personally don't feel like I need him if he gave a presentation last week.
But, but he could answer any, you know, nitpicky clarifying questions that we have.
Fair enough, and I welcome that.
And the other thing he could do is he could have his stuff ready because we are getting close to budget time and have him come up so that he could do some of that maybe presentation that he was gonna get prepared. So the meeting in November, where you're gonna be up against the crunch, that maybe you could make some decisions on some of the other benefits to put into the budget preparation. Because the next big decision meeting will be December, and your budget's gonna be pretty much done by then. So I think you really need to have Colin finish what he started in that, what you asked him. I know it's not a decision-making meeting on Monday night, but at least you'd have a couple of weeks to look at what he needs to present so that you can do it and make a decision in November.
You're, you're referring to his, you're not referring to his fire department.
No, 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 like the Colonial life and the Aflac and.
Disability.
People gonna look at your disability, you're gonna look at your dental, and look at some of those other benefits that you requested at the last meeting. And I think he needs to have that all prepared and do a presentation on Monday. Whether that's all that the working meeting is Monday, is just a presentation on Monday night, and you guys have some item Monday, which medical insurance you're going to go with. But we need to have Colin do his presentation now. So come November, when we're like down, getting close to the crunch for budgets, that we have some numbers to work with.
Could you clarify what presentation Kathy's talking about?
So there were some other auxiliary benefits that Colin mentioned from Colonial Penn and Aflac.
We currently have disability and life insurance, but he mentioned even additional coverage above that, accidental and some other things.
Yeah, there were some other individual items like accident insurance. I can't, I can't remember. May, that, that might have been the fourth document.
I wrote it down, accident and life. I'm sorry, what, 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 Wade?
I'm sorry, I, I understand the thought behind Colonial. I'm sorry, I, I understand the thought behind Colonial and Aflac, but that's, that's just overcomplicating.
Right, I, I considered that additional benefits at this time and I didn't really think that we were going down that particular route.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, most do I.
Um, to Sue's thought earlier, um, I don't know if we're heading in the direction of a gold plan in the future, but it seems like that conversation needs to take place with other conversations as well. Um, and I don't feel like we can reach that topic next week. I think it's gonna be too complex to get there in this, this period of time.
You mean in terms of, you know, do we make the jump to gold and when? I, I think we have to just kind of roll with the punches on that because who knows what's gonna happen with insurance.
I, I don't know, but, uh, I, I, I think it has to be a more comprehensive conversation than what we're looking at just here. You know, this is already pretty comprehensive.
I think that the goals, no matter how you look at it, is a reduction from the quality of the plan that they have now. Based on having to reach 6,400 before getting a single benefit. I, I, there's no way to argue that that's not a disadvantage to our employees. And that was that. That gold plan is what prompted the discussion about increasing the HRA. When you stick with the platinum plan, which is the exact same plan that they have now, there's no need to entertain raising the HRA because it's exactly the same. The only concern that I had about MVP was how broadly available it is and whether or not employees' doctors accept it. That's my only concern about MVP. But everything was exactly the same as Blue Cross Blue Shield. The deductible, the coverage, like right down the line, check, 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 check. It was the same plan, just at a lower cost. But is it available? And does the, the provider that the current employees visit, does, do they accept it? I don't know. It would be something that would be worthwhile looking into. But I think that gold is too big a jump for the one-year timeframe. Because I think it means compensating the employees in either an increase in their pay or an increase in the HRA, or possibly both.
Now, procedurally here, we don't have to, the thought just occurred to me, we don't have to table anything because there isn't an actionable item on the table. It was discussion slash action on the warning. So we can just let this, it, you know, if we do want, if a motion does want to be made to approve something now, we can. If not, we can always, you know, we can just say no.
I'm gonna make one and if it doesn't pass, I forgive you guys, I don't care. It's, if, I'm just gonna make a motion that at next Monday's meeting, we consider providing platinum Blue Cross Blue Shield or platinum MVP insurance to our employees for the following year of 2026.
I'll second that. I, my only hesitation here is procedurally, granted, we're not strictly adhering to Roberts rules of order here, but we can't, under Roberts rules, you can't make a motion to limit a later action item. That, that doesn't pass. It, it doesn't pass a couple of sniff tests because you can't, you can pass limits on length of discussion, duration, or duration of discussion, amount of comments from each person, but I don't think you can, you can't make a motion to limit the scope of.
I just don't wanna do this hour and some odd minutes over again.
I know, Sue, and I, I hear you, but at the end of the day, um, this, this is, this is democracy in Vermont, right? This is, this is a tough decision, it's a, there's a lot of factors that go into this. And, you know, hopefully, the, the other thing is as chair of the board, you know, a, as acting chair right now, I can choose who to recognize. So, one thing to consider might be. Sorry, Wade?
Yes, sorry, the other option is to make that motion tonight. I'm to, I'm deciding on MVP or the other.
Oh, you, you mean, you mean the motion.
Actually, do you want to change, do you want me to change my motion to choosing?
Well, I'm just thinking, yeah, I'm thinking MVP is gonna be a cost savings to the town if we're not gonna address employees' pain at this point. And MVP and then is it gold, the gold plan?
Platinum.
Or, or, I'm sorry, platinum. I just looked at mine today, I'm sorry.
Oh, so I see, so you're proposing limiting the scope to only considering MVP plans? Again, I don't know if that's, and it's, it's a shame Dave Morrison's not here.
Or did he make a motion to approve the MVP Platinum Plan this evening? Was that what you were saying, Wade? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm saying yes, that's absolutely what I said.
That we would select it. So, if I was to make the motion, I would say, I make a motion that the town of Waterford use MVP Platinum Health Insurance Plan for 2026.
Yes.
If that were seconded, we could table that until next week, is that what you're saying?
No, we would, we want it decided and it would be decided.
And I would second that, if that was a motion.
Okay, then I will make that motion and we'll see how it goes.
So we have a motion to approve the, uh, MVP, use of the MVP Platinum.
Yes.
Health plan for next year.
For 2026.
Okay, any further discussion from the members?
I don't feel qualified or prepared to approve it. I also don't wanna disprove it, I would probably abstain, but that's kind of cowardly.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm opposed. Okay, so two ayes, one nay, I would stain.
So it doesn't, if the motion is not.
The motion does not pass.
Maybe we just ask the chair to not let all of this conversation happen again on Monday.
I don't think we need to repeat this.
Again, I think it would be prudent to call him in here and to, if you're just gonna compare those two plans and have him go through it, and then if that's what you're gonna do, make, do that. But limit your discussion to just those two plans right now. But have Colin come in and just make sure all the numbers that have been thrown out tonight are correct. And then.
I looked them up, I did.
Yeah, just Colin's probably got a little bit better knowledge.
Those are correct, I printed them out again, they are correct. They're correct 2026 numbers for small group. I even looked at that watchdog organization in Vermont that didn't allow Blue Cross Blue Shield to have their full increase. They didn't allow MVP to have their full increase. They're, they clawed them back to 4.4% average for Blue Cross Blue Shield and a 2.5% average for MVP. And I looked up the availability and I even looked up the Better Business. I forgot to share that with you, hold on, I looked up their Better Business ratings.
Okay, I will.
And Blue Cross Blue Shield had an A rating and MVP Healthcare had an A-plus rating. Just wanna.
One last comment of that.
Because maybe there wasn't enough time for other town people to come to this meeting. You should be fully transparent and say it'll be a discussion about exactly this so that it won't come back at you. Like, give them a full seven days to be prepared to come to, to hear it. I'm just saying.
Well, we said it at our last meeting.
Yes.
Last Monday, you said.
Oh, last Monday.
Last Monday, we said.
And, and in theory, they have access to both that, the video of that livestream and this one.
Yeah.
Okay, there being no other business on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Sue, renewed by Sue, seconded by Wade. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned at 7:18 PM?
I'm letting you go, Wade, have a big evening, bye-bye.
Okay, I just have to wash my hands.